All right, we'll go on and get going and let the work session tonight. I appreciate you all being here. Let's start off with a pledge if you wouldn't mind standing.
Decide the pledge of me.
I pledge to the black of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Our nation and its soul, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. We'll go ahead and let the record show that. All finding commission members are in attendance except for Commissioner Wickern and we're going to excuse her from tonight's meeting. You guys have a chance to review them. There's a chip coming back at me. Have a chance to review the minutes from our March meetings. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
A motion for a second. All over in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll kick off. That's quick. Any public comments or items not on tonight's agenda? Anything from the planning commissioners? I guess you're up, Charlie. Directors report.
Uh, nothing to report today.
Liam dogged us, so we ain't got nothing from legal, so I guess we'll adjourn to our work session. First item is going to be to review and discussion of the Taylor Landing rezon proposal. Mr. Charlie, I don't see much aid.
I'm Mr. Norshes.
Alan's.
Darren.
Aaron, Aaron, that's right. Let's start with the night.
Trying to get logged in here.
We'll let Charlie get rolling.
We'll back up. I'll make a comment. I thought yesterday's meeting was great. Very successful. Glad to see everybody turn out. And for something that. Hopefully will be good for the community going forward.
Me too. Glad you guys all made it. I think it was really helpful and I think it helped the county commissioners see. How dedicated and devoted you guys are.
Let's hope that it, that something comes of it though. You know, it's. I know they're pretty adamant and want to push and want to get it done and I, I think most of us agree we'd like to see it happen as well. But. We want to see the follow through of it.
Yes.
So.
First and the pudding.
That's right.
That's one of those thousand reasons not to and want to do that.
Yeah.
Exactly. Reversal of attitude yesterday. From one of the commissions, I think.
Yeah. Quietly after.
Said that he's, he's learning. Changing his shape.
He'd been learning for how long? Good Lord, he's about to be the most longest tenured commissioner. Then you'd have it figured out.
Hold on, I got a stat question. How long has he been?
This is eight years. When he's getting four more if he wins. He'll be the only commissioner in the county there. We've served three times.
Really?
I didn't know that. That's amazing.
Yeah, usually takes one time a year.
One day of one.
What we're about here.
He doesn't have anybody running. Not on the Republican side.
The only way it lights up is if you can test.
He's got Democrat, Libertarian.
Okay.
Olson and. No, Olson was the guy that was running against.
That's the one who ran last time. Me and Sharon.
Oh, okay.
I was on. Beat us in convention and. Probably Sharon had seen.
I would return against that with beer, right? That's who I was, that's what I was thinking of. I was thinking that was Olson, but that's not his name. I think it's this, I think, was it the Democrat guy that runs every time?
Right.
Got my system all restarted, so. Sorry about that. Um, so this is a continuation of the special you guys had last month on the Taylor Landing subdivision. Um, you guys tabled it last month for us to talk about a few things and pretty have to think through a few things on, uh, what comes to open space as well as we needed to do a general plan amendment. Um, and so, uh, they have submitted an application for general plan amendment. Um, and depending on tonight's meeting, uh, we'll. That'll gauge which, uh, which meeting goes for a public hearing. I think. Um, given that, uh, we did talk a little bit in the meeting about, um. Whether or not the, the parks donation is sufficient, um, or satisfactory for the area. I, I did get another, um. Uh, text from the park district just to reminding me to remind you guys that they're fine with the land. They, they really are eager to pick the land up. And so they're not asking for anything more than that right now. Um, there is some potential. Uh, I think it's okay for me to say on the record now, there is some potential for them to get access to water. Uh, they're too welcome property, but they're gonna have to go through and get the water, uh, changed over into their name. Um, but we did talk to, talk to Aaron a little bit about that and, um, Aaron mentioned that they're not finding on hanging on to that water. So just. They gotta figure out who the water belongs to because my understanding is it was, it was lost in a bankruptcy or something like that. So there wasn't water. There was.
You go down the state by now.
So we did, we did look. It's still in the previous owner's name.
Rope is stolen.
Yeah, uh, even though. So they understand their legal requirements around it. I'm a little bit fuzzy on, but my understanding is water should transfer unless it's specifically excluded. But with where it was, uh. Uh, bankruptcy or foreclosure or something like that, even though the land went into different ownership, nobody updated the state.
That's common.
And that may be, yeah, that's, I mean, it may very well be that.
There's some new laws too that. It's not, now if they might find some years and it's not in use, then maybe they can't take it back.
Okay, and there may be that as well. So I don't know how solid it is, uh, on getting that water, but I did, um, draft together with the park district's attorney. We drafted a, just a brief paragraph that can go in a development agreement that says, to the extent that the owner heritage has. Any access to that water, legal, we kind of got water that they'll, um, event to the park district. So the park district at least has one of the two wells on the property. Um.
You only need the one. The one that has the sixty feet of water.
But I said, I think in the draft we put the one, the park district is to choose which one it is or something like that. Now, uh, I haven't pitched that to Aaron yet, so I, I don't know.
There's a well they punched for the wash system for that long. And that's what's used to serve Bobby's house and Bob's house.
Somebody has water somewhere. It's just a matter of really figuring out who it is. The reason I talked to the, uh, park district's attorney today was to find out if they really wanted to push. The ownership of that once it's transferred into that, once the land is transferred into the land, if it is transferred into the name. Are they willing to go to court and get it adjudicated and figure out who actually owns it and get it changed at the state? And I don't know what the answer to that question is yet, but they're eager to find water. Let's just say that. Um, but they're even more eager to pick up the property.
Well, okay. We could, we could talk about that all night, but boy.
We're going down that road.
Um, as we, as I was looking a little bit at, uh, the project and the, uh, phases four and five as they currently are, uh, are laid out. We had, um, Mr. Gonzalez who came in and discussed, uh, at the public hearing, his desires to possibly, um, replat his open stay. So he's got one acre right behind his property. And if pull this up on the screen.
So see.
Yeah, in Texas. That's right. Well, he's, he's got, he's right on that street and so it'd be really easy for him to get a few lots out of that. But it got me thinking, what about? We've had questions from probably five or six of those owners asking why they can't do anything with the back portion of their property, which is open space.
Well, the problem is, is halfway down the road now you got people that are doing stuff with it and building buildings and.
And we're talking about going east on the north side of twenty-two hundred, right? From forty-three. Yeah, there's a couple of buildings there.
I love what you've drawn up with those lines, but someone needs to go out and talk to those property owners and say, is this something you really want to do?
So that's.
If we can get them on board, then I see that's where we push for those connections. If they're not going to come on board with it, it's not going to work.
Yeah, yeah, I disagree with you on that. So let's talk about opportunity and how we get opportunity. So Mr. Gonzalez has this lot right here and. Jeff, can you see that? He's got this lot right here is where his house is, the school is right here. And then he's got that one acre piece of open space. All of these lots here and here were platted with the, uh. Residential lots up front and then an acre of open space behind with the exception of these, there's a couple of them that don't have any space that go with them.
But doesn't Gonzalez have the detention basin in it too?
Yes, he does.
And I, and I took a ride around there on my way in here today and they're nothing but a mess.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's nothing but a mess.
So there's a couple of things that we could do. Um, I mean, we could say if the other landowners don't. Want to give consent on something like this, that the whole thing is dead. Um, you could also say, well, um. We've got a general idea of the way we want to move forward. Um, so maybe if Gonzalez wants to do it, he stubs his road to the guy to the north and then the guy to the north stubs it further to the north. Yeah, and then if Heritage stubs theirs to the south, maybe there's a connection at least across those three. Um, this down here, I mean, you've got more landowners and so I'm not entirely certain how that.
And the buildings, the buildings are on along, along the ones on twenty-two hundred. The ones going north on forty-three, I didn't notice. I didn't see any buildings.
Is there a homeowners association? No, they don't tip.
There, well, there's some trails back in the back there that are owned by an HOA.
Oh, yeah, private ownership. Each of those one acre parcels are owned by.
The individual in front.
In front.
This was the first phase of what Taylor Landings is now, used to be called Sunset Equestria.
Yep.
It was supposed to be this big master plan thing and. One phase goes in and then it goes to the fountain.
And that's where we are now. Now we're at Taylor Landings, different.
Listen, Taylor Landings is the fourth one.
Yeah.
If I recall on this chunk of property.
So, uh, chatted a little bit with Aaron and, and Marsha about some connectivity possibilities. I did also chat with, um, Commissioner Furr about it and he said, you know. If we're talking about park donations versus street and pathway connections, um. He would be fine with the donation of the park as long as these other streets make a connection. They stub in instead of cul-de-sac. He's, he's willing to make that trade off that especially since phases four and five, they're already approved as, as they are cul-de-sacs and, you know, non-stubs. That's pretty big ask. We wouldn't be taking lots. Um, we would, well, we wouldn't. Encourage the taking of those lots, but we would rather. Allow them to scramble the lots so that they can still get the same amount of lots in there. They just do what it's not.
Why couldn't they put some part of the component that they gotta do? These smaller, affordable homes and part of this.
You could.
Open space obtainable, yeah, the, the new obtainable like we discussed yesterday. Why couldn't it here? Over there in that new section.
We could. You certainly have that conversation and, um, Aaron, so we can discuss that with him. Um. I've been asked a question. Yeah.
I did, in light of what, I mean, there was, I think, some good response coming out of yesterday's meeting, both from the planning position side and even the county commission side and. I mean, really, if you flat out this all as a whole and you looked at this, I mean, you're talking, this was a hundred and thirty acre development. So you're, you're pushing up there in one of these big ones. We could make something like that work.
You know, as far as, uh, the amount of overall density in the entire subdivision, um, if the whole thing was R one fifteen from the beginning, uh, yeah, they'd, they'd be entitled to a few more, uh, lots out of it. And I know Aaron and I, when we first started discussing this, talked about maybe the possibility of getting some townhomes or something in there.
I'm done with town.
But, but sounds like Harvey's done with the townhomes as well, so maybe some, some small lot. How do you guys feel? And I was going to ask Harvey this question, uh, offline too. How do you guys feel about, um. Uh, zero lot line, um. Home. So it's basically a twin home, but the, the, the property owner owns the dirt.
Zero and five.
Yeah, you got zero on one side, maybe five or ten on the other side. Yeah, how, how do you guys feel about that? I know that doesn't technically mean the single family. Yeah, and, and that's what I'm thinking. I think that's a good way to get patio homes and it's a little bit more efficient of a land use. Not necessarily, but they could. So if it's a zero lot line, um, basically both of the homes can stand on their own. Um, and so under that, under that, uh, situation, the, the building itself isn't owned by an HOA or anything like that. It's just the property from the street to the backyard. To the wall, where, which is also the property line to the other side of the, of the lot would be owned by them. So you wouldn't have to have an HOA, but you could. Um, and sometimes when you got the twin home situation, it is nice to see that with an HOA.
Yeah, you almost have to for the long run. Your roof goes to hell when one neighbor fixes it, the other neighbor don't, and then it leaks on your side.
Yeah, I feel like you almost.
Yeah.
How much is this?
Uh, so they've got nine point eight acres right now and there's a potential to get another twenty-two and some change. I believe, was that, is that right? Twenty-two and some change, might be actually twenty-four. Um.
So the nine acres that current, I was in that green space, it's on there.
On the west side.
Oh, it's the west, okay.
Yeah, so.
Northwest, right?
This is the nine and a half acres they have right here.
It's that whole strip. And that one? To the east is already developed, right? That's still proposed. That's not the new subdivision.
The, this right here.
That is.
That's the proposed.
Yes, Winston, okay.
You know, to the point of, of what we've got going with townhomes, I think what we have is enough. I think we need to get some. Some different dwelling units and maybe even some single families to kind of catch up with that a little bit. That's my thought.
No, I, I agree. I, I, when I seen that G bar proposal come through last week, it just pissed me off. Everything that comes in now, it's townhomes, townhomes, townhomes.
And I think that, I think that one of the thought processes is that's the only way they're going to be able to get their density. Well, that's, that's, you know, if we stick with the one third, that's a great way to get density, but it shoves it all in one place. And it'd kind of be nice to have a little more, you know, a little more room. We've got the opportunity to get some smaller, single family homes in there.
Yeah.
And maybe look at that a little bit.
Is, uh, six thousand square feet, uh, is that still the number you guys are thinking of or would you rather see smaller?
Why?
I've got, I've got five thousand square feet, uh, here knocked in and.
I got about six myself.
Do you?
Yeah.
And I think my main level is seven or eight hundred square feet.
Same.
So I still have more lawn than I want to mow.
At the end of the day, my thing, I lock for a credit, I don't care. It's that obtainable lock.
Yeah.
I mean, and if they've got to be smaller to make that obtainable work where it's still a single family. You know, detached, it's its own unit.
Are you gonna do that still maintain the fifteen thousand square?
You can.
Well, you, you could, um, you could still go smaller. Just the average should be fifteen thousand square foot average. And so your other lots would just be bigger.
Which might be more attractive to folks that are in that realm. Economic realm.
But the best thing about like what that proposal come through was is it's all mixed together. You're not alienated because you have a small house.
But the thing that's nice about that is because it's big enough to do that.
It's.
Two hundred and forty acres. I mean, we don't have that. You, you do, you do. This is one of the few.
Yes, one of the few. You're not going to see this every time. And if we're going to gum up and start releasing. Basically dedicated open space, those are the things that I want to see in trade.
Well, and as far as this goes, I'd rather see the development with the additional park acreage. Because it's going to be made much better use as a park is it's going to be as just plain open space.
Oh, yeah.
Overtime. Yeah, you'll get somebody to farm it for, for a minute and then that's going to go away and then it's just going to be another eyesore. So.
But my problem, uh, and a lot of it comes back to the numbers. It's just like we were figuring last time. When you take the lots and what they're wanting to change. You know, you're pushing, oh, we're over a million bucks, right? And the value that they're putting on this ground that has no, but no debt, you know, i- i- essentially it has. No building rights to it.
Right.
It has no water. And it's pretty poor ground. So even if you put a dollar amount of it, you know, ag ground in, in other counties, ten, twelve thousand dollars an acre, normally that comes with water and you can farm it. You're aw- awful high here. So you still be on the high side and say ten, twelve thousand an acre, okay, twenty-two acres. Twelve thousand dollars. We're barely tipping three hundred grand. To say, oh, we'll give you this ground. But we're going to build. Seventy additional lots.
Well. And, and I'm really, here, here's what I'm frustrated and it's come out of the Winston Park. Work session yesterday. And, you know, the water went up. Your water connections went up.
Did you go back and watch that one?
No, I just, I talked to some people. And. Our, our water cost, Taylor West Weber went up out of our control. What we were basing prices of the water at, Taylor West Weber, I don't have any capacity anymore.
Yeah.
It's almost eight thousand dollars a connection for that walk, just for your water. Sorry, you know, I think we're pretty dead set that seventy-five hundred dollars an acre now or, or a lot. On the parks fee. And to have a developer come in and say they can't build it. And on ground that has no density that they can't do anything with moving forward. But now we're going to put seventy lots on a, on a twenty acre piece of ground. And, you know, what are these lots? What are lots up there? Hundred and fifty plus thousand. You know, on a thirty acre. And I'm sorry, ten million dollars. If, if that has no value for what you got to put in, you're giving away a problem area. Especially on this one, because that open space is going to be nothing but a nuisance. And it's going to be a headache for another hat that I wear on the weed board. Of, you know, keeping it something done with.
You don't want to be out there weeding it, I'd say.
No, I don't wear, I don't, that's Bart's problem, not mine. We just get to deal with the complaint side of it, which is probably worse.
Yeah.
Maybe I would rather sit on track and go all the shit down and listen to the complaints you got to hear about. But it, it's really frustrating to me to have these developers come in and, and say that. A lot of this stuff is out of our control. We could just leave it the way it is and the ground has no density and it can stay open space and yeah, is it going to be an eyesore? Yeah, probably. But, I mean, I, I see where there can be a public benefit for this, but. Quit crying. I'm sorry, you know, we're going to ask for some stuff because we're giving you more than what you have today.
So Winston Park Development, um, we, we wrote into the development agreement a couple of things and yet to be approved by the county commissioners, but I think they're a little closer than they have been before. Uh, we've got one county commissioner that. Doesn't want to change the general plan at all. And so anything that takes anything out of, if it's open space on the general plan, it's what it should be. I'm going to try and, and work with that commissioner to let them know that that was. How the plan was supposed to be written. It was supposed to be with a little bit of more flexibility in there. Because none of those lines are crisp lines. We don't know where they end and where they begin. We just know that they're kind of in that general area. But. What Winston Park is going to do, uh, so. They, uh. I don't know if they paid me a compliment or, uh, or, or, or gave me some offense by, uh, saying how hard it is to, to, that I'm a hard negotiator, but, um, we've got. Uh, the park that is in Winston Park, um. That they have suggested and proposed to donate to the park district. There's some question as to whether or not they want to donate that or, or maybe just use it for, um. Additional density. Maybe it's some patio walls or something like that, uh, especially when a small park like that acre and a half. That isn't going to provide the value that a thirty-four acre park is going to provide to the community. And so you can see that on the, on the map up here. I put an orange line through, um, here. This, these lots right here are Winston Park and they're already planted. These two lots are owned by, I think it's Castle Creek. Um. When Winston Park, number one, when they started this, they bought back a couple of lots to get their streets to connect in the first place. And so that's not an unrealistic expectation. We've seen that happen already. And number two, they started negotiating with Castle Creek to put a pathway going between those lots to connect to this property so that. You've got a direct access for the Winston Park subdivision all the way to this twenty, oh, sorry, uh, thirty-four acre park if it becomes a thirty-five acre park. That I think is going to be a greater benefit, having that connection than it would be to have an acre and a half park off McFarner.
Oh, I don't disagree.
But we had something to negotiate with and they're have, they're eager to not have to put in, I mean, they're looking at playground prices, looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars. They're eager to not put in their three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements into an acre and a half park that no one's going to use as might go to weeds. And go buy a fifty thousand dollar, uh, easement through somebody else's property.
Yeah. I want to back up just for a second. And, and go to. Conversations with commissioners and the general plan. Long after they're not commissioners any longer and maybe some of us are gone. What's going to happen to places like that if we stick to what exactly? And we all know the, I'm going to preface this with the fact that the general plan is a guideline, not the law. Okay, so it's made to change. It's made to move. It's made to be fluid. All right, so now I'll go back to the point of, of the commissioners not being commissioners anymore and some of us being gone. That low lying fruit on an open space in an area like that is going to be ripe for apartments. Now, do we do something with that now that's going to look good into the future and be, be the future? Or do we leave it open and, and allow something else to come in later that people really didn't intend to be there?
Well, at least great for the apartment after that place looks really bad for, for you. I mean, that's, uh, you know, it's. Some of these areas are just better being built on. Period. That's the best use for some of this. So. Winston, some of that, the misses.
Oh, yeah, the ground that they're proposing.
Yeah.
I mean, really, at the end of the day, shitty as the park ground is, that's what it should be in the park ground too. So, but now I'll come back to that just for a second, but at the same time, to friend's point, I agree. It's not a gimme just because they want to put houses there. We'd like to see that possibly. It's not a gimme, you know, it's, it's going to be something that they're getting a lot of density there where there's got to be some push and pull here, you know? So that's my. That's my take on that.
Do you want to hear from Red Sue, Aaron?
Come join us. If you want to.
If you're there.
Last time I think we pissed your guy off. He wasn't even talking to us. He just bowed his head and said, now we're good.
So Aaron Robinson, uh, Vice President of Heritage Land Development. Uh, filling in for Marsha tonight. I appreciate you guys having us. Um, I appreciate your discussion of concerns that you raised. All valid. Um. While we may have different opinions on specific, specific price and our values, I think the concepts that we're all discussing are. I, I think we're pretty close to the same page. My bottom line is for us to develop her as we look at this, it is a number scheme. And to say, you know, is it worth fifteen thousand, five thousand, fifteen thousand, a hundred thousand? At the end of the day, it doesn't even matter. What matters is, as you guys are saying, is this where we want the park and can we do everything else that you're asking for me to work? From, from my standpoint, and, and I'll fill this to you. We just wrote up a spreadsheet. What is it going to cost for us to put those lots in based on what you're asking? And how many of those ass can we achieve and still make a profit? If I'm not making a profit today, I'm incentivized to. Leave horses on it for another ten years until I get a different attitude that we made a profit on. That's just the long and short of it. We're not. We're not here to make enemies. We're not here to make people mad, but I'm also not here to lose money.
No, we don't. I don't think anyone up the front of the table wanting to lose money.
So from my standpoint, from a negotiation standpoint, we stand here. Ready and willing to hear ideas and figure things out and play with numbers. And at the end of the day, you know, all Marsha is doing is taking your feedback coming back to me and I'm putting it into a spreadsheet saying, yeah, that works for it. No, that doesn't. It's pretty straightforward. Um, your idea of smaller lots and, and can we get some smaller lots? Happy to, happy to entertain it. There's, there's a point of diminishing returns on that. It's not one for one. Um, but the, there is an ability to. Density allows us to pay for more things because we're getting more parade, right? Um, but it's, it's not linear. It's, there's, there's kind of some curvature to how those lines work because. It, of, of just how the development's going to cost me. Um, to your point, I still have to pay, whether it's a thirty acre or. Four thousand square feet, I'm still paying seventy-seven or seventy-five hundred bucks for water. So, um, we'll just plug it into the, the equation and see if it works. Where we stand right now as a, as a, as part of feedback, my road extension, um, and this is to no fault other than this is. What I got out of this, when I take my hard and soft costs for the road extension on thirty-nine hundred west, so that's the main blue one there. Which I would under, as I understand, talking with Charlie is the most important connection that we want made. Um, that is costing me just under a million dollars to make that connection. That's with the assumption. And we have now been able to confirm that my, my good neighbor there is willing to give up a portion of his ground for that full road. Now we currently have it as kind of a half plus ten and we can fit that on my property and, and that's fine. I like that connection. It helps me. It's, it's a smart connection to make. I can make that work. I can make that work, um, the park donation, um, I think it's worth more, you think it's worth less, if I use Charlie's number. That's, you know, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars and. And we, Charlie was asking us for HVAC upgrades and that's costing me. On all the homes out there, uh, another two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I can make all that pencil network straight. Um, these connecting on these western properties, we took just kind of a rough stab on those, all the black lines. If I were to make all the connections, so the cost in my lots that I lose, um, and the additional asphalt. You know, I'm running about six hundred and seventy thousand. Um, the, there is a request for homes to have solar panels, that, that was another million. Um, additional fencing was requested. And, you know, I'm putting in, you know, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the fencing, just kind of some of the wind guess on what that would take. Um. When I go down and I run my numbers, I can pay for some of that, I can, but I can't pay for all of them. Now, if we wanna look at, uh, we, we were having a conversation initially with TDRs. And taking that to some other property that we own, uh, I'm happy to have that conversation. Um, you know, you're talking smaller lots, I would love to have three to four thousand square foot lots up in Syria. Um, we can put a twelve hundred square foot home on them, detached, single family.
What's your price?
No garage. Um, pending, some things we haven't looked at in this specific area, we looked at a project here in Ogden. And I was able to get homes, um, in at, uh, less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for detached and family.
So you hit that obtainable, and, and that's where that conversation come from, we actually met with another developer yesterday and had Steve Waldrup there and. You know, we were talking on this whole obtainable level that the governor's pushing for on the project. There's a lot of support, I, I think I can say, not only from us, but from the county commission as well, if we can hit that. You know, that obtainable number and Steve told us what's obtainable under four hundred thousand, isn't it? So.
Um, to, to, just to developer's feedback on Charlie's suggestion of these zero lot lines. Um, we've got a couple of projects where we've got a zero lot line, but the, the lot line zero has to not be between the homes. Because the moment that I have to start fire reading both those walls because of proximity, I blow my budgets. If I can give five feet and five feet on both sides and do a zero lot line like on a shared driveway. Um, then, then I can start to make things like that work. Um, but, uh, but a four or five, you know, I can go to a twenty five hundred square foot lot. Put a twelve hundred square foot home on it, and, and I'm well on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, for that. Uh, pending on what my connection fees and other things are, what I pay for the grant. Um, so, you know, we're happy and willing to have the conversation. Again, for us, we, we will run the math. We do wanna make, you know, and I'll tell you, we wanna make between fifteen to twenty percent of my expanding shares on a separate return. We'll plug it in, if math kicks out to the CS, the answer is yes. So, um. I'm, I'm ready, willing to have any conversation you want, and I'll put those numbers together as fast as I can, that's what we're at.
Where did the talk come from on solar panels?
The stinking plant?
Bail of his solar panels.
That's later. Don't jump the gun.
Yeah, and, uh, just so you know, Aaron, uh, Commissioner Frower in yesterday's meeting. We had the conversation about Winston Park and he said, nah, I'm not, I'm not worried about the solar panels, let's not do that. And now I don't know how the other two feel, they didn't even, but my guess is.
I can tell you from a marketing standpoint, um, solar panels are gonna cost me anywhere from twelve to twenty thousand dollars. And from a valuation standpoint, selling to customers, I'll get maybe five thousand dollars of value.
But they'll buy the house and live in it for you, then they'll pay more than that to put them on, is what's crazy.
Yeah.
I, I think the solar panel needs to go away.
But the, 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 from a new buyer, they, most new buyers. People that are putting solar panels on their homes are the ones that have owned them for a while. They bought them, the market was at a different place, they're now sitting in a more comfortable position, an equity position. They plan on staying there for the next ten years, then that starts to be accessible.
See, I'd rather buy a new house that already had it on it, because then you're not shoving it out, because every time I try and pencil solar, they don't make sense.
Yeah, you're only paying five thousand dollars extra for that house. Yeah.
Well, that's alright, you're getting twenty thousand dollars worth of solar pack.
No, no, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's the difference that makes. Yeah, we're, if, if the commissioners, um, don't want us to push on solar, we won't be pushing on solar on, on any of the projects. Until you guys say bring it back, now that's the residential projects, when the, the commercial project, it might have a different conversation.
And I think my point to the, to the roads, I, over here on the west side. I mean, yeah, that, I would love to see all that houses, especially where we've got the school right there and that would fit this area. But how we can make that work, because it's all single ownered and, you know, I think like Uncle Jed was saying a while ago, if it was an HOA, it'd be easy. Maybe that was you, one of you two said something.
It's hard to make it work, cuz if one guy puts a house right in the door, it screws it up for everybody.
Yeah, and you got guys with barns and horses and stuff. And tell everyone of those property owners are on board and committed to go this way, you know, it, it's tough, I mean. I'd love to see the connections and I don't like to see cul-de-sacs, but maybe that's, unfortunately, that's the piecemeal of the development. You know.
That's the fallout on this one.
Exactly, it, it was screwed up from the first one going defunct and now we're picking up the pieces, so.
So I told Mr. Gonzalez that we won't use this application for him to pay you back on, so he could submit his own application. Um, but if he could get, uh, his neighbors, the other two, uh, owners to the north of them. To actually agree to something like this, where we would have just a side three meter with them. Then we can ask, uh, Heritage to stub, but if, if he can't even get them on board, it wouldn't make sense for us.
He doesn't wanna move across the street.
Uh, he's the one right on that main road here.
Well, my problem with that one is, is now you're stubbing a road out, even where you're coming out on Faveros property. That takes away anything that they could develop, that property's not wide enough to put that stub road and then still put lots into. Or Carl's house.
Did, did you? I haven't, um, chatted with them yet. Um, I did do a little bit of analysis on that, they could still get three lots out of that property.
It is wide enough?
Uh, to, to put a, uh, uh, sixty foot wide road and then still get a few lots out of it. Um, but if they don't have a road in, I think they could only get two, cuz the width this way is narrower. So this road would actually bring a, a wider width, but again, we didn't, we didn't clear it through them or anything like that, we're just looking at possibilities.
Remember what happened last time that you lined out a map through someone's house?
I avoided all the houses. You can see a cul-de-sac right here.
Good lord, we got beat up on that one forever. Yeah, that five minutes seemed like five hours. So basically, so you're good with putting the road in.
As long as. Pick what I was willing to do today and move ahead as design. Um, contingent upon our neighbor, which he, he said he would consider. But there's a big gap between would consider to sign papers, right?
We're, we're, I, I'm learning that one.
Um, but the, our neighbor there said he would consider, you know, cuz he, he's not dumb to the understanding that. If that road goes in now. He, the, what my number doesn't include was putting in laterals for, uh, homes that aren't platted, cuz they're not platted.
I don't know where they're gonna be.
Right, what size is he gonna do? Um, he, he's, is the, the, the smart path with to match what we have on the other side and just. But I don't have a number for that, is, is it a big number? No, but it is a number. Um, he alluded to the fact that he may consider paying just the lateral fee because it's. You know, well, I'm putting it in, it's a couple thousand bucks to put him in versus what it would be in the future. Um, so he was admirable, but we, we've surveyed it, we had it drawn up, we just haven't had, we, we just got those documents done. We haven't had time to go back out, stand on site and say, hey, this is what it is, what it's gonna be. But assuming that that's the case, then yeah, I would put in that, that full road all the way through full width. Excluding the sidewalk on his side, we, it'd just be curving gutter, and then everything else on, on, onto my sides. Um, do the park donation, do the furnace upgrade, and that, that works out great. Here, now, if you want more, then you can do some of the lot changes and things that.
What's the, what's the furnace upgrade?
So.
We're talking about this property very casey with.
The furnace upgrade, we were asked to, to go from our standard eighty five percent, we require a builder to do a ninety five percent efficiency on this furnace system.
Yeah, in our general plan.
Um, the higher efficiency buildings are, it doesn't necessarily say do it with a furnace, do it with a, um. Water heater or whatever, but that's one place that we started. Um, another place that we are working through with Winston Park is, uh, we could say. Make sure your buildings are seven percent, uh, more efficient than whatever the default is. Now, the state adopted a new efficiency code and then they rolled back to the twenty thirteen, um. So we could even just say, make your buildings as efficient as the, what was previously adopted, the newer, what, twenty twenty two or whatever. Um, efficiency standards, to do that.
Do they spill everything out, or do you sell lots?
I sell lots.
Okay.
And, and so my numbers, I called up my builders, I said, it was a cost. And that's why I pulled my number twelve.
Indeed restricted, so the, the development agreement would, uh, be recorded to the property, that'd be the deed restriction. And then in the development agreement, it would say successors and assigns, if they buy the property, they're buying the obligation to do the same. So then, we wouldn't pass off on final inspection, uh, unless it, it shows. So, uh, we, it's easy at res check, cuz we could just check it, you know, see what the efficiency rating is, if we're going a percentage over.
I think the furnace is a smart way, cuz it's easy, it is easy to place.
Yeah, it's, it's an easy check, yeah, we're at it. Uh, but when we're talking about a certain percentage over, we might actually get to that certain percentage over just by doing furnaces and, and water heaters. So Stan's actually doing some numbers for me and he's gonna, gonna look at it. Um, and he's gonna tell me what he thinks would be a reasonable percentage over efficiency. Uh, over existing efficiency standards. But they are more expensive, uh, meaning we're looking ten to twenty percent increased costs. And if you get the really nice ones, the smart ones, you're looking at double cost. I don't know, that's what I was shopping for the other day.
So what's, is the park donation just the ground then?
We were gonna donate the ground and whatever potential they had to get in those water rights as well. Um, we don't have them, I can't negotiate with them cuz they're not my name, but I think that there is a argument that they could be gotten. Um, based on our own research on it, and, and I'm happy to sign that off and let them do the best to acquire it.
It's a big, there's a big dollar value to that.
Well, I know, there's a huge dollar value, cuz he hasn't talked to Jolly about what that water's worth yet.
I know exactly what that water's worth, I'm trying to buy it for everything else I got.
That takes Weaver base that out of the equation.
I have a question on the parks, Aaron, so part of the concern that I've heard with the park is. I mean, we've talked about how we value the land and how you value it, part of that is because of. The, the land needing some major improvements. And I guess to it, I would say it's nicely, but I don't know that our park district understands there has the capability of making that. Is there anything that you would consider doing to improve some of the, the manure pile, whatever?
Chip ons out back?
Yeah, like, is there anything that you could do to improve that land, to make it more viable on it?
And the answer is always yes, we can do.
Are there anything I'm willing to do to make it sound better for us?
It, yeah, the, the, the answer is yes, if, if I can make a pencil, the answer is yes, if I need to go grub and take care of some things and, and. That's the magic fit, if I can make my numbers with it, absolutely. For example, I've got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in potential fencing. If you were to tell me, hey, the fencing isn't that important, we're gonna require that of the builders anyway, they're gonna put up wherever they want, we don't wanna fight that. Or we would like you to apply that money to getting rid of or, or grading out or doing something on the park, sure.
What is the fencing? Cuz there's really no ag letting down it outside of the Whittaker property.
So one of the things that general plan says is to, um, beautify the, uh, the bigger corridors that you're not getting access. Because your homes aren't basic, it's gonna be really easy to make them gross. A hundred and fifteen thousand to put that fence along eighteen hundred, well, let me, let me look at it again, is that, was it this property right here, uh?
So I was taking my fence, um, I was, I've got it longer, so I've got. Um, I priced it as a six foot high mile fence along three sides of my property. And I'm along eighteen hundred, I'm fencing the park, and I'm fencing that, um, uh, my property over to my. On, on that south, south side, right?
Does there subdivision code require fencing? Maybe that's what it is.
Um, only within a certain distance of a canal or a water body, depending on the.
It's one of those ordinance that we wanted to work on for years.
Ag, adjacent to ag.
Yeah, so I'm adjacent to ag, or adjacent to a park, and I'm adjacent to a leisure corridor, so I was putting fences on the research.
Well, we don't wanna. Not make them do that, if that's what's in, you know, the ordinance, right?
Yeah, there, there shouldn't be, if it's, if it's in the ordinance, I'll check the ordinance again, uh, just to.
Again, if we're changing, if, if you want us to go with smaller lots or do something else, I can pull some more money out of this and do other things, so. The, the answer for me is always yes, if.
Well, for me, I personally, and I, again, this is maybe a little naive, but I want that. The value of that property to be more of what we see in answer. It's staying open space, but it just says the park's name on it instead. Same open says, space the same way that it is currently, but it has a new name on it, that is the, the community end to get.
Well, and the other side of it is, is what's the dollar amount the parks district's gotta put into it, and it's gonna cost all of us to improve it.
Yeah.
Cuz we want, I mean, the, the layout, and I think you guys come up with the layout for that park with the arena and all that stuff in there and fields, I love it. I'd love to see it there, I think it'd be a great, great addition.
Problem putting that in for us, right?
We can talk about to facilitate.
Well, and seeing that, that's a huge part of the discussion, I think, if we could put, I mean. Build this whole stinking thing in houses, and let's see, where else can we put the park to actually make it where it's gonna grow some?
And I. We're. We're just a calculator, you know, whatever works, we're in. Um, I, you know, I, I don't profess to be a better land planner than, than your planning department, I think. Charlie and your Tammy and these other do a fabulous job, having a park in this location. Is given the existing densities that are there and everything that's coming around, that is, is a great location for a big regional park. Um.
I don't disagree.
Is it gonna cost the Parks Department another one point two million dollars to develop it out, yeah?
Oh, at least.
And. And.
That's without the shit removal.
I, I mean, I just know what that ground's been for all its life, I did a lot of farming right there.
No, I know.
And.
How many years?
Go back to the same story I told you about when I worked at West Haven. We did a lot of digging out clay out at the country park to get grass to grow. And that's exactly what's gonna have to be done at this place.
So you could subtract the fence requirement out, um, the, well, subtract some of the number out. Um, I think the only fence that we'd be looking at is along eighteen hundred, and that's for the. The side and the rear of lots, if you've got, um. For example, if you're potentially selling some of this acreage to the, the buyer that you were thinking of, where they've got a front facing product. Um, that, that would have to be fenced.
Okay, and I don't know how interested they are, they've been pretty quiet, uh, as of recently, so. I would hate to negotiate with that in mind, but yeah, we can pull some of that, and if you want me to apply those dollars to that park, um. What I can do with that, how much I, you know, what's the biggest concern, if you want me to get rid of, uh. And, and just grade it out, clean it up as far as piles of whatever we don't know exists there.
You dig too much, you might find something you don't wanna get into is a problem. Especially back in the old.
Just seal it and put some sod over the top.
Realign and, but, I, I'm ready to make a deal, you tell me what you want, we're.
Let's make a deal.
Yeah.
So if you're looking at the entire subdivision phases one through six, uh, which includes the, the seventy one. The seventy one or seventy two lots, um, coming out of, out of this new phase. Um, the total would be two hundred and fourteen, um, but they could, if they redid the whole thing. Um, they could potentially get three hundred and four, now, I'm not saying that they should redo all the ones that are, have a. But maybe the difference between two fourteen and three oh four, maybe that can be included in this phase, or some portion of that difference could be included in this phase.
What are you doing with that?
Well. Sorry, so you've got, what is that, eighty, eighty, you've got eighty lot difference. So ninety, so throw that ninety into the seventy two. And they're still getting the same amount of lots that they would have gotten out of the entire project. Uh, if the whole thing was R one fifteen when they first bought it and started developing it on the regionals. Uh, if the whole thing was R one fifteen when they first bought it and started developing it on the regionals.
Well, you're gonna put ninety more lots.
How small do you wanna go?
Five-story apartments.
Write that down, I'm not writing that down.
I'm just kidding.
I think one of the, the, these, and I'm gonna call them twenty five hundred to five thousand square foot lots. Those for us get really attractive, because I can't do small. Uh, small setbacks and I don't have a requirement of a garage, um, I can really bring my pricing down. Um, a- and that's what, you know, August built out of, right? I mean, everywhere you go, you got a nice brick home that's was built sixty years ago and it's still a nice brick home and. And some of them were kept up nice and some of them are not, that's, I I think that can be true to different things, but. It's a very marketable piece and the advantage of that over a townhome, is there's no HOA.
Well, it's it, you, you have something and not everybody wants.
In my backyard, I can have a dog and fence my yard, I can't do that in a townhome. And we have qualification problems with HOAs, cause I've got a four hundred thousand dollar townhome that's right on the cusp. And I'll sum up the hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and twenty dollar a month HOA fee. It might as well be a five hundred thousand dollar house.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree and one thing I would like to see, I mean, I, and I don't know if it's possible on this particular one, but I wanna see it intermixed with the larger ones. I wanna see the smaller ones and the bigger ones, cause I think that solves your problem of the upkeep. Cause if you've got a five hundred or eight hundred thousand dollar house next to that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. They're gonna do a good job keeping up their place, well, when all the neighbors do, it kind of entices the others to keep.
And there, we've researched this a little bit on our end, because we're acquiring larger scraps of land. And we have several projects that are over a hundred acres and so we're looking at this master plan a little bit. There's a critical mass, like if I have two single family lots or three single family lots, they're big and then the rest are small or vice versa. Um, they don't even sell, there, there's not enough of it to make it work. I've gotta have in the neighborhood of about twenty to thirty units that are of a similar size. Before people start to feel like it can full fit, and if you look at some of the other master plan and successful communities, you can see that. They have a lot of diversity, but and and they are intermixed, but there's, there's a critical mass that has to exist before it feels just awful.
Yeah, I, I, I see that.
I mean, like some of those houses more towards north, they're a lot smaller than they are to the south.
Just totally different subdivision.
Yeah, but they actually well together if you go through there, right? Then it gets bigger and it kind of flows like you're saying, you have that many of them, they're a lot of like.
I don't know, as much as it pains me. Because I think the parks are shooting themselves in the foot with what they're getting. But I think that road connection's a big thing to get and. In the park, like Charlie said, they're pretty adamant they wanna.
I think Charlie is looking at this from the standpoint that there's a lot of other developments that he's gonna get dollars in lieu of and come in and. Of the do this, but. I don't know how community friendly you guys are working to negotiate all that through, but. If, if this body isn't giving him the dollars, it is a state weeds.
Well, and it's not so much the, I mean, I think it's pretty, we've come to an agreement, I think the commissioners are with us. On a dollar now of of what that is and a lot of it's gonna start coming in to get, you know, down to these densities. And, but I, it still pains me to see the mess that the parks district's getting into, but. They're their own entity, they're their own board, we've tried, we've tried, we've tried and. At, at the end of the day, to hold up what these guys wanna do for, you know, they're willing to take it. As much as the.
How much do you feel? The, the land is worth that you're giving to the parks, I think you're.
How, how much do I feel or how much I am willing to accept?
Or both.
Yeah, so.
What we gotta do to get you in this park today?
But I think we, we felt, you know, you've heard, I haven't heard any numbers, but like, what, what do you think the value of that?
When we originally looked at this, the number I placed on it was forty thousand dollars. Because if it's developable, I'm paying, you know, closer to six feet or a hundred, depending on what I can develop things. If I pull it back now, can somebody make money buying that to farm it? No, but, but whoever's buying that piece is buying it. They're buying it to put their horses, they stay with their horses for their house across the street or around the corner. And and build a barn on or do something else, it's, it's, that is not a farmable piece, because. Farming these days, you're gonna have, you know, at least sixty acres or bigger to really start making money farming, and that's not this piece. The, the pieces that we're looking at giving up are roughly twenty two, twenty four acres, or I forget the exact number.
But would you not agree that it, I mean, say it is farm ground? What would that value be? Farm ground with no density, mind you.
So I've got ground that it's un-farmable next to a river that I'm selling for over a hundred thousand dollars acre. And I can't build a house on, because you guys have a three hundred foot offset. But because I can put a house near it and that's private access to the river through the trees and this beautiful beast. I mean, I'm selling those estate lots for five hundred thousand dollars. So you can't tell me it's worthless, because I know to the right customer in the right situation, it totally is or something.
I know, but this piece in particular.
Yeah, so.
I, I, I agree with your river ground and, and you know, I, I'm basing numbers off a property that was bought in Locks Elder County. And, you know, farmable property.
If you, and and you can pass this around, if you wanna take a look at what, I pulled this off the MLS today. What sold within the last year that was designated at. Not one of those is less than twenty five thousand dollars acre.
Where at? Huntsville, well Huntsville, Liberty, Liberty, one in Maryx Sladeville. Sixty thousand.
All I did, and you can do this, I just went to the MLS. Plus being ag ground, Weber County is populated that way. That's that ground on the river.
Right there behind, uh, it's down there by Buffalo Bob's. Well, from the other way, raise out a body and go to Dead End.
Behind Chad.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just like Buffalo Bob, yes.
So there's one, you own Buffalo, you own the tire shop, and Buffalo Bob, we farm the ground for forever. He still does, he's got a cool little place way back in the back and. Nice house in the, well, almost in the trees and.
Sounds like he makes some great chicken wings or something like that.
I've got a bunch of donkeys back there.
Oh, where do you guys wanna go from here?
I mean, it's. I, I think where it comes to this point, I mean, they need to put, bring the proposal, we tabled it based on, you know, some things with the road, if they're willing to do the road. They said the parks thing pains me. But, uh, but they're their own entity, at the end of the day, I mean. They've got a board to make a decision, they say they feel it's worth it, I.
At the end of the day, when, I mean, if you think of this, anything is worth what somebody's willing to pay for it. And, and this is a piece of ground specifically in the Parks Department side, it's probably worth a hundred grand an acre in their eyes, because. It is the park, the property, right next to the other property to the other, that they wanna develop right in the middle of all the development. I mean, when I sell to the church, they come, they pay me a premium price for the gate creation. Because it's right where we want it, it's right in the middle of my subdivision, and so I charge it subdivision prices.
They have the parks at the bank, all the church does.
The park district only has one attorney.
Hard time. Not a whole division.
So it's at that end, though, the, the property from Parks Department is your replacement. And it is the right place for it. Now, is it worth thirty or fifty or ten or twenty, at the end of the, it doesn't matter, I still have to make it. Everything else that I'm giving up pencil on my end, and I, and I'm willing to give, it's not that I don't wanna give, I just, I'm just running my numbers and as long as I'm. Making my return, I'm, I'm in.
Well, I think, in my opinion, I mean, it's been a good discussion, but they need to, I, I mean, Heritage can bring back the proposal of what they're willing to do. I mean, it's, we tabled it, they've applied for the general plan amendment like it needs to be done and bring it back to a meeting, that's all. And I, I mean, I don't know if you guys weigh in, but I think that's all we can do at this point.
Do you wanna see us put in a proposal that has some smaller lots and give you some money? To help improve that ground.
If there's an attainable component to the smaller lots, I'm in favor of that.
Deed restricted?
Just like the conversation yesterday, if not deed restricted, then it makes.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's gotta be along the same lines of, of what we talked about. I have no idea what you talked about yesterday, so.
Well, the commission was talking like twenty five or more.
I don't think it's the same person for twenty five years, right? Restriction was within twenty five. It just can't be a lot more, right?
Yeah, it, it has to stay a single family, it can't go into a rental property, right? And, and.
Hold on, so the deed restriction is not tied to the price, it's tied to ownership. So how do you, if I've got a job and I've gotta leave and I gotta rent it out till it sells, it's not possible, it's not possible. No one's gonna understand that.
No one's gonna check even.
I mean, there you go. Like, I'm sorry.
Uh, so when it goes to the deed.
It looks good on paper.
The, the housing authority, that's, that's what they do, um, if the deed restriction is in favor of the housing authority, so they'll make sure that, um. That it gets vetted, uh, for, um, primary occupancy. Right, um, I do think that we should tie it to a number.
So I've been able to successfully move product and, and we've been willing to do things here on in where. We did a deed restriction on the initial sell, because that was something I could control. But after that, um, you know, we. It, it, like to your point, it's unmanageable, it's unverifiable, and it's just a lawsuit for somebody waiting to happen. But we didn't wanna, you know, because some neighbor does it and the next thing he was like, well, you can't, and he throws a big fit and. But on the initial sell, that's very controllable on our side, that's something that we wouldn't want.
I, I'd make a suggestion here, that maybe, maybe we can get some contact information with Steve Waldron. To Aaron and let them talk a little bit about what might be available to them. Through the state, through the, yeah, through the table program that the legislature, uh, passed a lot of. A lot of legislation on and, you know, maybe you can get familiar with that a little bit, and that might help. You'd understand better what we can't articulate real well to you, and charge it, but maybe, maybe for sure I can. But, but it, it might be a good thing to do, just so that.
Especially since we have the other projects that we're looking at, this conversation.
Well, and you've got a project that's got the acreage to really make that lay into, go a long ways, I feel, that's, that's what sold us. Especially on the project we met with, we had a big joint work session with the county commission and all the planning commission developer yesterday. That, uh, uh, but it's a two hundred plus acre project and, you know, you can make that work a lot easier, I, I could see this being tough. But it's something, you know, if there's a chance in there to make it work, but I would just throw one recommendation out before it comes back to us. I, I think these guys need to go to a work session with the county commission and see what they're willing to do as well. Because we can put a lot of stuff out there and they can shut it all down. And so to say, just not wasting our time and especially not wasting your time. Go see where the commission's at on this, you know, what, what we've talked about tonight and what you guys are willing to do. Go see if they're willing to buy off on it, and if they're willing to, I mean, I, I'm one vote, but, you know. I think we can get to a place here that, that we can make it work, but at the end of the day, we just make recommendations, they have the final say. And, and to that point, I think that if you had a conversation with Steve Waldron and you mentioned that in your work session with commissions, it would go along, right? Especially. Absolutely, so they can see it.
Yep, absolutely. Oh, you wanna set the note first, Charlie?
Yeah, I have to do that and I'll, I'll reach out to him and get a meeting together. Um, on the board, I, uh, or on the screen right there, I've got, um, just two numbers for you guys to see. Um, the median household income has, uh, increased pretty dramatically over the last few years, um, for. Weber County as a whole, so we'll look at median household income, it's, it's measured county by county. Um, and so I just plugged in, if I'm making a hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, a year at a seven and a half percent interest, which is. Um, a good interest rate right now, uh, that's a exactly four hundred thousand dollar home. And that is the, that's the out the door purchase price, you know, so that. Anything in addition would be, uh, on top of that, so, um. It's carrying, what was it, like a three hundred fifty thousand dollar mortgage or something like that, or a three hundred twenty five thousand dollar mortgage or that, but. And then you see the next step down on eighty percent, um, that, that's a three hundred thirty one thousand, which nobody's building, nobody can build. Uh, it's just with the pencil, so when I hear things like maybe three fifty and and Nielsen Home's saying maybe four hundred on some things. That, you know, don't throw the garage in as the standard, throw the garage in as the upgrade or something like that, um. It makes me hopeful that we could at least start hitting some of the hundred percent AMI, which we haven't been able to do.
Well, their, their proposal, theirs said three forty. So, it's right here, I, I mean, it hits your.
So you, you get the eighty percent, but, and here's where the key comes in, I mean, but that, if it's that first deed restriction, yeah, you're. Generational wealth for that family.
Exactly.
But if that family can flip it at six hundred fifty thousand dollars, then you're not building generational wealth for anybody after that.
Right, see, I think the thing that we were looking at when we did our, especially with this one, is we were truly building it. We weren't artificially, um, giving something, but. Giving one family benefit, for example, you know, August has done these nice houses that are over here on their nine block here. Beautiful nice house, first guy in gets discounted rate at, on the backs of, of whoever, right? Then that finance that, the moment he sells it, he sells it for more. What, what we were proposing is that it's not artificially hell low, it's, it is truly a house that. Costs us that much to provide and has that value, you know, you're going in and, and we can make it look nice on the outside, we can cheapen things up on the inside. But if they size and they, a scope that, when they go to sell it, they don't need to sell for a whole bunch more, because if. It is what it is, it, it won't, you know, if I've got a twelve hundred square foot, uh, home on a twelve hundred square foot basement. That's partially finished, it's only gonna sell for so much out the market and, and yeah, they'll get an inflation of whatever that was, but it's, it's a market rate. We're not artificially pushing it there.
Yeah, if it sells for market rate, then we wouldn't need a deed restrict to a price tag, that, that would just go. Uh, the challenge is, you know, if the place becomes really affluent, right? Uh, you know, up in, up in, uh, not my neighborhood, but a little bit further east of my neighborhood, you got some really small homes going for a lot of money that. You know, I couldn't afford, smaller than the home that I live in, um, just because of where it's located. But, um, you know, sometimes we become victims of our own success and I don't know that we shouldn't necessarily do anything about that.
I don't think we can unplan that. But it's not help, we're still dealing with. There, there's a lot of farm ground out there for more houses.
I had to put this in perspective for myself with the park, so I did some quick math from Fremont High, so don't judge me.
Don't you, uh, teach at my college?
Definitely not that. So Aaron, the twenty acres, you valued it roughly at forty grand an acre, right? So that's eight hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, if you were to get seventy two lots on any other development and donated the seventy five hundred that the parks are looking for. That's five hundred and forty K, so you're three hundred and forty thousand dollars, what, and as far as your. Um, appraisal, I guess, for lack of better terms, um. And we were really thinking about it, I mean, the comparisons were like really good farmland from that quick thing that we saw in the valley, right? Sixty, so even if we said half of your evaluation, twenty thousand acre, that would be four hundred and forty. Um, thousand dollars, and so you're right at a hundred thousand dollars less than what we would have gotten. If you were doing this in any other development, that makes sense?
Can I throw one inch in it? Pop the other map, Charlie, so they're replating phases four and five. Because four and five is not losing the open space. Because four and five not losing the open space, so essentially you've got the seventy lots plus the lots in the other red box. So we're really talking a hundred and twenty four lots. So the seventy five hundred or that dollar amount would have to. Would have to play to the hundred and twenty.
Here, let me get you.
As in, we'll save for lack of better terms.
And they're changing those ones.
I would argue is actually right. Because any cost that I'm bearing may be some what's new, not what I already have approved. If I don't get. I I I'm already vested on the end of lots.
But they're giving up the open space from four and five based on the approval.
I I understand that, but he's not actually, like, the open space would stay the open space, but four and five are staying the same. Whether, if he leaves it open space, he still has. So he's giving up the open space. Four and five, but it's really making him have phase six.
Basically, yeah, that's exactly what.
Right, so I'm saying, hey, I've I've vested on these lots.
Right, you're.
And they're only vested if you give the open space.
Agreed. But happy to do it. My my number is set up and we'll do that. But if I can get seventy more, seventy two more lots, then I wanted to do all these other things that currently I'm not willing to do, right? If.
But if it stays as it is, you still do phases four and five. Everything just stays, okay.
And and that's why I would argue his math was correct, because I'm putting a full burden on getting those lots of. On getting those lots, because everything else is already vested.
Otherwise, it's gonna stay this.
Leave the lot like, like four, four and five are going to be not, I get the attainable housing, all about attainable housing. And I get it in what we talked about yesterday, but I feel like people are already. I guess my word is pissed off that you're going to do what you're going to do here, like they're like, oh, we want the open space, or I do feel like the park will be. Better than just being open space, but if you go in there, throw lots of little lots and smaller houses. Everyone around is gonna say, okay, now you did that to us too. I would just kind of stick with. The same mojo. That's my first.
I could agree, it's, you know, maybe this isn't the right spot.
Like, I don't know that, yeah, like, I don't know that this is the spot.
So, going back. If we're valuing it the way Aaron is saying, and just the additional lots, right? It's four hundred and forty two thousand five hundred bucks, so twenty five hundred bucks more from what. If I was saying we're giving a low ball on property value, twenty thousand dollars, it's only twenty five hundred bucks off. So, that personally makes me feel better about it, I mean. As far as what you'd be donating to the park anyways.
What I heard Commissioner Harvey say yesterday on the Winston Park subject. Um, was that he wants to see seventy five hundred per lot, but he was talking about new lots. And so he wasn't even talking about going retro on Winston Park either. And so they already committed to two thousand dollars a lot, e- even retro for the original fifty four. Um, but now that Harvey said seventy five, uh, they're all looking at their new ones. And I think Harvey will be okay with that, it makes sense.
Appreciate the conversation, Aaron. We know you got to benefit in order to.
And 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 from our standpoint, we're vested in making sure that. I, we're not a five line head developer.
We got lots more projects worth it, young.
We're, I've got three LOIs on another six hundred acres.
Well, we like the discussion. Marsha's been great, uh, having discussions with us. It really helps us when we go into area development things and we have these discussions and understanding, it wastes me.
Even a work session on the train. That would've been interesting, one but fun. Yeah, that was a long train ride, did you turn around and ride on a train back, but it worked.
Aaron, as you have your eyes on other acreage, uh, I think the commissioners are gonna stick with the seventy five hundred lot, so just make sure you're.
But I, yeah, I think. A lot of good discussion, but I would meet with them guys upstairs for a week and like that.
Yeah, well, you wanna say? I can talk to Stephen once, we can, and once I know when that's gonna be, I'll let you know so we can set up for a session with the commissioners. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay, Tammy, we got forty five minutes left before I wanna get.
Well, I hate to tell you this, but Charlie's probably gonna do most of the talking, because he's got the math for this, but let me.
To say that, the longer we talk, the less time to get built. I told you my feelings on what you're proposing. Well, then the conversation will be short. You wanna cut us out of the process, I'm against it.
Sorry, trying to share some of your.
Promised or thought they were promised. If, I know, I I'm interested in that, if it can work.
I feel like. This won't be, I'm not, I'm kinda tired of fighting for the park this year, but they've learned to fight themselves, because they they see the first shiny coin and they're, oh, yay. And honestly, I don't know that this is that, now that I've looked at the numbers, it doesn't feel as bad as it did before. But I still want them to look more into what's gonna take to make that part rather than.
So it's gonna be an expensive part. It's gonna be a very expensive part that we're gonna have to.
And they're gonna, but they're gonna have to be born to. And and Ron and should make it into that. Yeah, now they're gonna have to go get some money.
A few people do that. They're on there, I'm I'm afraid when it starts to get tough, they're gonna buy and then who's gonna be there to pick up the shit, literally.
Okay, one more thing, really quick. Furnace upgrade, the HVAC upgrade, really that just, I mean, he's talking about it, but that just really falls on the guy who buys the lot and has to. Upgrade it, right?
Yeah, your inspectors.
No, but does it fall on him as a developer? Which really falls on the builder.
The solar, the solar wood as well, however, because the solar is such a big price tag. People would have a hard time paying.
Don't bring up the trees, we need the trees to that.
So many things in there. Regardless if he's only selling lots or houses, he still has to sell that lot to somebody that can make good fees for it, so I guess it doesn't matter if he's not selling it or not.
But how does he put developers, being sure everybody bakes two hundred grand a year, then we know that. Telling that.
And I wanna have to pay those taxes, so I wanna be paid the two hundred thousand a year, but not pay extra taxes.
This is the thing that I I heard yesterday was that no matter what kind of houses he puts in and whatever he charges for them. He's still gonna sell them. So maybe we should focus on putting more and more expensive houses in, then people can't afford them, and the price will come down. It's almost scary.
Large builders don't build them if they can't.
It's almost scary.
The problem is, is they will sell me even the expensive.
It's true.
I find a house over a million dollars right now, but it doesn't go like that. Well, everybody can buy it, it'll last as long as you can afford it. Six months and you're.
Let's talk parks. One question when we start. Have we talked to the Parks District? Because when I used to be on that board, before I got off. This was supposed to happen. We signed a contract with J U B, or they did. To build a Parks Master Plan and where these are supposed to go.
They do have a Parks Master Plan, but it doesn't have this.
So they paid a lot of money for nothing.
Yeah, there is a, there is a map in their Parks Master Plan that shows some parks, but it's not the one park per. Or one five acre park for uh within a half mile every phone door. And our general plan says that because the park district asked for that, um, I think I. I've got, I would echo the same sentiment, I think, as 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 Casey, that, you know, it's kind of hard to fight their battles. Um, I also wanna point out that if we were a municipality with a parking wreck department. We'd still be doing this, it'd be the planning commission doing this kind of stuff, including uh a Parks Master Plan. And so, uh, for me, I just kind of consider it as part of the job, because I know that they're volunteers.
Let's dissolve it and turn that into the Municipal Services District we were talking about, and we can take that on too.
Sounds fantastic, gotta get the state code to change first, but let's let's change state code so we can create a municipal services district and. You'll never have to have a city out there if you don't want it, and tax yourselves.
The county's already wanting to do municipal services for other services.
Yeah, uh, if if you provide more than two, I think the state could limit you to two or something like that. Um, so snow plowing and, I don't know, whatever other one we do, but snow plowing and planting. No, this is.
But, all right, parks.
So, what you see are all the parks that are on your general plan future rec map. These are all centered. On the locations that are kind of pinpointed, right? Nothing survey grade. Each of these circles has a half mile radius. Okay, so this is what's already roughly mapped out in the general plan. If we were, this is twenty three parks, okay? This is twenty three parks that are already on there.
Didn't change it there.
It didn't change this here, it might take a second.
Shake your tablet.
Bang it a little bit on the table.
Well, Tommy's doing that. One thing I recently noticed was, when we talk about these parks, we want these big things. Anybody go past West Haven Park on thirty three hundred during the baby animal days?
No, I just heard about it.
There was no parking anywhere, all the way from thirty five hundred, Clara up to Midland, everybody was parking then north and south.
They had ten thousand people there that day.
Yeah. And all those soccer fields or grass, empty grassland soccer fields were just vacant, not having people on them, because they haven't. They should have, now looking back, I'm like, oh, that's been great, that's great, grassland, right? We really need more parking in our parks, if you're gonna have events held at those parks. Sorry.
It could be a basketball court or a big parking lot.
Hard surface soccer.
We're really toughing them up.
I think collection, we're doing plain see, I think we should just send them all over there.
Hey, this right here, guys, this is your twenty three. General plan parks in red. Plus nineteen additional to kind of fill in. These areas, because your general plan calls for every door to be within a half mile. Of a park. This is what this looks like. The areas that were excluded were areas west of this uh freeway going in. Wetlands areas, both to the north and the south. Of some of that, but this is what it looks like, and I think we still. At full buildout in a hundred years or what have you, you still don't have enough parks.
Trying to find that uh, kind of find that calculation.
Charlie was running calculations all on his head, he didn't share them with me, so.
I've got a spreadsheet, but for some reason, I shouldn't seem to.
Did you guys happen to make the comparison to a geographical area, uh, that's that's built out? Just to see how this compares to that.
Well, we we took the, we took our geographic area and we estimated buildout. Now, we we severely underestimated buildout, because we didn't wanna scare anyone. So I took all of the area that is um shown on the map as uh the. Uh, fifty thousand square feet, um, and I I extrapolated that out and I didn't subtract out any of the. Village areas or the higher density areas, and so I just took the straight third acre lot calculation. Um, and if we were to maximize our buildout, I mean, we'd be over a hundred and thirteen thousand people. Now, if we start applying numbers, we're we're pretty close on this, we started applying those numbers here. Um, the Weaver River Parkway. It's close to, gosh, now I gotta do this by memory, I think it's close to six hundred acres. If you're taking the the line of the river all the way down, like three hundred feet on both sides, that's about six hundred acres, and that will serve quite a few people. Uh, yeah, it was six hundred and seventy acres, because it'll serve sixty seven thousand people. Now, that's not a complete park, right? That's just, um, so I. To tell you that, imagine this table in your mind, because it's in my mind now, um.
He just thought, he he just thought he drew all this out. It's just all in.
I dreamed about it. Yes, unfortunately, I do. But not this, um, so the the six hundred and seventy acres could serve sixty seven thousand people, that's just passive play though. That's just, just trail system, right? It's a nature area, um, not groomed parks, and so. I would guess maybe ten percent of the river corridor will be actual finished or completed park area. Whereas um uh an actual park, like the one we've been talking about, that'll be a hundred percent developed, you know, at some point in time. When I put all those numbers together, um. With the red line, uh, with the red circles, uh, those are the ones represented from our general plan, as well as with. The purple circles that that Tammy's showing. Uh, and Tammy just drew the purple circles in there, those are the gaps between the red circles that the general plan shows. Um, it almost gets us enough acreage, I think we're be, I think we're down a hundred and something acres uh at buildout. Um, and so, uh, it gets us close to one thousand and I think it's one thousand fifty acres total. And about fifty percent, I think it was forty eight percent of that is developed, and the other is natural, which that seems to be about, right? About fifty fifty natural to develop, um, ten acres per thousand people. And so, that's just a heck of a lot of parks.
Question is, is, so, that ask, that begs the question, is. Is ten acres for every one thousand people too much?
That's a good question.
Why couldn't we do, what, why does that whole river corridor gotta be the natural park?
It doesn't have to be.
I mean, look at Longport Park and the arena and everything there, and look at what you have there.
So, so, let's take it, we just go to the the red circles. So if you look at this, uh, that's, that's shown as a groomed park, that whole area in there, most of these oxbows are shown as groomed marks. And so we're already saying some of that is going to be groomed, um, uh, and we included that in different acreage.
I just, I would hate to just say that's all gotta be natural and trail and stuff, let's, let's get them off bank for our buck and. I mean, some. Some neat groomed parts along those corridors could be really nice.
Yeah, getting it is the different story, right? Uh, if we were a city or if the county had a parks department. Um, we could be working with landowners, we could get first right of refusal, we could also um. Use eminent domain if we felt like it was appropriate.
I didn't think you could do that.
For parks you can, for trails you cannot, um, right now, uh, they've talked.
Sounds like we've solved the problem, the county needs to take over parks.
Uh, I've actually floated that idea as well, and our Parks District definitely doesn't like it. Cause it sounds like they don't wanna fund a whole lot when it comes to county parks.
Well, I'm a Parks District taxpayer and I'm sick of paying taxes every year and I got nothing to show for it.
That makes sense. And I don't think that it would be a bad idea for the county, I mean, Salt Lake County has a huge park system. Uh, and county what? Park system, and each city has their own, but Salt Lake County has their county parks within even city areas.
What is the average? What the average for northern Utah, or the average for Weber County of acres per thousand people?
I only looked at those uh four.
And I can't, but I can't remember the number.
I think we were, so the two that are in Davis County just south of us that are frankly most like us, or or will be most like us when we grow up. Um, they were two point three three acres, five thousand. So ten is a lot, it's a very high, it's a very high level of service, South Ogden was six point seven. Um, and then uh Alpine, what was it? Not Alpine, the one by Alpine. Highland, uh, they were over twelve, they had a lot of open space, I would say. Yeah, and like seventy percent of theirs was open space, uh, not groomed park.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the circles on that map, and as as much as I'd like to say that that's attainable, ha ha ha, word of the day. Probably really not.
My question is, is, same as you, like, how much do we need? Like, I love parks. But ninety percent of the time, they're empty and nobody's in them. So like, is there something that we really need to put on as big as a bag? So like, is there something that we really need to put on as big of a value as we do?
It's a good question. Uh, it's a really good question. It seemed like when we were going through the general plan process, uh, parks were really hit hard. Uh, we want to see most of our open space in in parks and controlled by the parks. But I don't know if anybody put pen to paper when it came to how much it costs to operate and maintain all of that. I'm pretty sure the park district.
I mean, because we like it for that open space, you know, idea, for it appeases us when we drive by or whatever, but we're talking about what you're actually spending.
Well, I think, I think kind of what people were considering at that time is all this open space that had been given up from cluster subdivisions. And the unusability of that, so why not be able to use it for a park? Sounds great. But is it real? Well, here we are talking about.
Right?
I think maybe we just need to be creative in what this is. Again, this is the parks district, creative in what we're putting there. If it's all this open grass. It's beautiful, but it's kind of a waste.
Yeah, non-functional turf, yeah. But but how do you get, now how do you, now how do you take that to parks, parks, uh? And how do you, how do you, you know, how do you, how do you massage that into the thinking process?
I think they need a build trip like we have. If you go take a Logan or somewhere else where they're being created with their parks, it's not just a playground that costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a tiny little thing. It's got bike parks that are pretty cheap to put in. I would say it's just dirt and it's equipment, it's a one-time thing. But things like that, they're a little bit maybe easier to maintain. I mean, people are walking to them, they're actually using.
Their bike parks are very expensive to maintain.
Are they?
Just because they get, they, once they get used a bunch, then they get tore up and trying to keep all those. We had one in Riverdale and it was, it got used a bunch and we spent a lot of time in there. And trying to regroom them and maintain it after, you know, they started getting tore up, then it's a, sometimes it's almost easier to level and start over.
And I bet they almost use much more of their grass.
I think that one, Riverdale, once it was packed down and Logan, it's.
They want them tight.
Pretty tight.
And that's the thing, they build them tight like that to try and stop, you know, but then too much used, same spot, you start wearing areas and then then the problem is trying to get it to pack back to that. But it's a good idea. I mean, it's it's stuff like that. It's the diversity in the parks.
That's good for my mind work.
So the struggle in all this is if we can identify where these parks belong, I mean, so on the map we show things, we show park areas, uh, we actually frankly, we show a big park area up in, uh, the, uh, Cherokee the River area, but, um, an individual owns it who didn't sell the rest of Cherokee property, uh, to heritage. And so we're gonna have to wait until that individual wants to sell it as a park, but he still has rights to do something else on it. Um, let's talk about the park that's over on forty-seven hundred, the planned park over on forty-seven hundred and ninety hundred south. Um, right there adjacent to the other heritage property. It's about nineteen, twenty acres, at least on our, on the, on the map, it's about nineteen, twenty acres. Um, and we're getting applications for other kinds of uses to happen on that property right now. It's, it's not a park, but it's a planned park, so right there forty-seven hundred and nine hundred south. And so
I'm just west of the elementary.
There's enough financial motivation in land ownership, in land ownership in the A-one zone to not see the benefit of selling the property at a rate that parks can be sold for. So you've got, um, art district, they've, they've got it. They're either gonna be paying the fifteen thousand square foot, uh, per lot rate, or they're gonna be paying the, uh, one unit per acre rate, uh, to try and pick up these properties. But, um, somehow we've got to get landowners motivated to sell. Cause we don't have enough big properties to, will you?
She's trying to pull it up. I can see it on her screen.
Oh, fine, I'll share you guys.
You can't turn things up. So, um, we identified some of the bigger parcels and then some of the parcels that are going for development now. Um, as as well as ones that have previously been developed. Um, and all the little pieces in between, the ten acre and greater, there's, there's not a whole lot of big parcels out there. And so if you're asking someone with ten acres to to figure out how to give up five acres of that, uh, it's, it's too big of an ask, I think, even through a reason. And so somehow we've got to figure out how to allow. You know, maybe these are owned by two different people, you know, and and maybe there's two and a half acres right there, that's a park or right, actually should probably be there. That's a park, uh, on both sides. So then you get five acres and you're working with landowners. But that just brings the likelihood that these parks are gonna come to fruition, uh, a lot lower. Cause now you've got multiple landowners that you've got to negotiate with to try and get these things. So I guess the moral of the story out of all this is, um, it's gonna take some pretty aggressive movement by the park to try and get one five acre park every half mile. And the half mile radiuses that Tammy's showing, uh, that says the crow flies. The the plan actually calls for it every half mile walking distance. So if we don't get good street connectivity, that those circles will be a lot bigger.
We might want to just.
Yeah, we may want to.
It's gonna be really, really tough. Is there, nobody's gonna wanna sell for market prices.
And and maybe that's where the seventy-five hundred.
They afford to maintain.
That's what I'm concerned. And maybe the seventy-five hundred per lot will get them the seed money that they need, um, but we haven't gotten to the point that we've seen someone write a check yet, at all. Any of the checks from previous to now, we haven't seen anyone give that donation to the park district yet.
How are they recorded?
We're not letting them go to recording yet. They have to. Well, I told the commissioners that I'd like to leave it where they're at, but they told Winston Park the other day, nope, seventy-five. So.
What if they want to cross the street from Winston?
Their development agreement is recorded, so we can't change that one. That's two thousand a lot.
So the development agreement has been recorded, but the lots, lots.
Yeah, and most of these, sorry, most of these developers are are doing, um, cut sweat equity. They're, they're going out and installing a lot of improvements before they report the plot. As opposed to giving the county a bunch of money and have the county hold it and they pay interest on it.
Winston's Park, right? Have you anybody driven by that lately?
I've been there.
The mud hole.
I was gonna say, it's a little like it could be a park.
Little, little pond.
It's a water park. But then their lots go down at least two and a half streets.
Yeah, the lot, they built that road up.
I dare propose it when he was here, but like, if they're really wanting out of this, I know they're not gonna be able to develop it anyways. I don't think, they'd have to bring in a ton of bill or something, but.
They priced it out. It's a big, it's a big price tag to put a park there.
It would be nice to have the funds for that and go to this where it's so close and. You know, how long is that close really as a benefit to the community?
No, that is what we're talking about. And I don't know if the commissioner's gonna want to have it come back to you guys to discuss or if they're, they're willing to take it. Um, instead of having a park there, they still have to have a detention basin, um, and it's gotta be a little bit bigger than the one that's already there. Um, but they're thinking about just putting some lots there and then taking all the lots that are along eighteen hundred and doing, um, some of these other, uh, products like patio homes on them. Um, they're, they haven't maximized, they're at what, thirty-seven or thirty-eight, uh, of the if they have sixty something, sixty-seven lots they could have gotten. And so I think they're gonna try and split some of those lots that are right by eighteen hundred and put some smaller, uh, smaller.
Is this park even an HOA, is it?
They would have, well, no.
The park in the middle behind that lot is an HOA park.
Not the one you're pointing at. Yeah, the green one on that map would have been going to the park district. I was surprised the park district volunteered to pick it up because they were pretty adamant, no, nothing less than five acres and makes sense.
Again, we're not, we're spitballing for that.
Well, I think initially they were gonna dry graze that land. That was the agreement when they got their approval. Uh, when they first came in, they proposed a place structure over in the detention basin that was gonna be covered in rock. And I said, I would never take my kids there in the summertime and play on a hundred and forty degree surface.
Right. It's cool right now.
They can shoot mosquitoes.
Shotgun or what do you use when you shoot mosquitoes?
So, so let me ask a question. What, what's the number of buildout again? I forget, but for for out west there.
Population, um, very, a very conservative number was a hundred and sixteen thousand people.
Okay, so that's telling me we're gonna have to have at least maybe four big parks.
Big ones, yeah.
Big ones.
So that was the other thing, we, that's the other thing we didn't talk about is the park district said, uh, they wanna have one big park, one regional park within two miles of their front door, which seems pretty reasonable, um, when you're looking at it from a big park perspective. Um, the delta between the amount that we see on the board, including the river and what will be needed at full buildout is about a hundred and twenty-five acres, I think. I mean, maybe some of that just gets attached into some of those regional parks.
Is it a little bigger? Harder or more costly to maintain a small park versus a large park? There's too many variables, depends on what they are.
It really just depends on what they are, but if, if it's apples to apples, same kind of improvements, it's, uh, less expensive to maintain a larger park because you have all of your stuff there. Not mobilizing, yeah.
What is, can I ask a question as staff? What is the possibility of doing less parks, larger parks and having a much more interconnected trail system? You know, a lot of multi-use paths.
And on these bigger developments, I would, I'm not opposed to seeing a little HOA take care of a little park. That could be hooked to the trail.
Cause you're not gonna get a lot of, in my opinion, not a lot of traffic to the smaller parks, you know?
No, I mean, somebody probably.
That's the new one that's right there across from letters.
Oh, okay.
And they're just getting the grass up. There's a nice playground. I mean, the developer put in a bathroom, a parking lot. Developer basically funded this one, nice playground. Well, and and what's the one over on, on, uh, forty-seven hundred west, past four thousand? I think it's a, isn't that a Weaver County park or West Haven?
West Haven.
Unless they're there playing football.
There's more people like at Kingsville Elementary using.
Which is the other thing, not only parks, again, we're speaking again for parks, but we need a rec building. And we need a bat. Like, we're getting kicked out of the other cities. Having kids in that age, we need a rec building. And I would like to see some of this property be used, but like this giant park have a rec building on that park too.
We twisted your arm to get on that park.
I know, hell.
You know?
I want, that's the problem, sir.
Well, so, so Charlie, I, I gotta back up. We've, we've got a park board, but it sounds like it's kind of our responsibility in a lot of different ways.
At the planning level. If, if we just leave it to a different entity, it's not getting it done.
Right, and and we've witnessed a lot of that. So what do we, what do we need to do here?
What, what's our way forward?
That's why we keep talking about it. So, um, just wanted to try and stimulate some ideas. Um, I, some of the ideas that I got from you guys is maybe we need to consolidate a little bit more. Uh, I mean, that helps because if there are ten acre parcels out there, uh, maybe we're encouraging the park district to go pick those parcels up or go get first right of refusal or work with the real estate agent to actually get somebody out there on the ground working, calling landowners and and trying to get something going on.
You want to really provide it on the developers when they have the opportunities.
So, and that's the other thing, our, our subdivision code right now says up to three percent of the property, uh, we can require up to three percent to go towards parks. And I think three percent's a little low. I think we can increase that. Um, I want to talk to our, um, attorneys just to make sure we're not going too high, but if we just were to rezone a property and not even talk about parks, when we rezone it, could we get a park later when they come in with the subdivision? I think we can. At that point, it's an exaction and so it's no longer a donation. We're no longer having them fill in the gaps for all the parks that we don't have. But, um, it's still a possibility. We can still do that.
I, I got a comment to me, just sitting here, uh, dealing with landowners and everything. How do we buy the park? Maybe we buy it through a TDR.
Yeah.
And that way there, uh, they're, they're gonna get their money basically.
Yep.
And we're gonna get land.
Yeah, what Aaron said he wanted, right? What he said he was open to.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, and I, that, that is essentially the program that I'm hoping the park district picks up. It, cause you, that's what you're doing. You're going to buy development rights off of someone's land so you can put a park there. Um, there are other ways that we can do it as well. If we've got some really good pieces that we have identified as good park spaces, uh, we should probably start talking to those landowners ourselves. Uh, maybe even have them come in and maybe we put together some kind of a, a steering committee. I know we're not gonna be able to do that this year because we're, we're short-staffed, but maybe in the, in the coming years, we put together steering committee of different landowners who might be willing to say, you know, these owners or these owners or these owners might be willing to give up a, a corner of their property. You get five owners that all have the same corner, uh, you might actually have a pretty good part and then they could develop around that. So, I mean, I'm looking at Mr. Witterer's property and he's got a little bit of space, um, but that's so close to another park that it might, might not even make sense to go there. Um, the only other properties that I could see is getting realistic park space out of are the eighty acre parcels, like the Navy Meadows. Getting a, getting a five acre park out of that plus thirteen acres of natural space, um, uh, because there was room to play with uh, in that park. And then they're also, they're also reserving property along the canal. Yeah, and so we were able, and we had to push hard to get, uh, five acres out of them. Uh, they got to the county commission, the county commission said, oh, you want a little bit of a different zone than the R one fifteen, you want the, because they were gonna do some townhomes there. Uh, county commission said, no, don't do that. So they've come back, you're gonna see it next week. Um, we posted it again for another public hearing. Um, they've come back with a different proposal, still smaller lot sizes. I think they're still getting some townhomes, but they're not getting extra density. They're not getting the extra density that they told us that they need in order to give a five acre park. But they also kept the park five acres, so that just tells us they lied to us about what they could have done.
So then, so then that's when it goes to, you know, Aaron, I can't remember his last name, but.
Robinson.
Robinson. We, we, we hear that, we hear what he can do or what he's willing to do and that's plug numbers in to see if it works. But I also hear that we can't. So I'm gonna go can't or won't.
That's the question.
And so now, what is this really worth? So is this, are we just playing poker here? Are we, are we just really seeing who's gonna end up on top of the end?
Well, he, he basically said that in his comment. He says, I can walk away and come back in ten years when there's a new whole bunch of new people. He did, he, he, he showed us. He's gonna walk away and say, I'm not gonna do nothing.
But I'll, but I'll bet you, I'll bet you that if we play long enough and maybe not too hard, but hard enough, I'll bet you we get there now in ten years. Because they still have money, but they gotta pay investors on that land today, not in ten years.
Well, and then you guys, I mean, I'm, I'm opposed to the smaller lot thing. You guys propose, you say that, he's over there going, oh yeah, show me the money. I mean, because he's just gonna make more.
Sure, but he's gotta, but he's gotta hit some milestones. They've gotta be somewhat affordable, less than four hundred thousand dollars, you know?
But not his problem. He's just selling lots.
Giving him more lots, but he's got it, he's got people that are gonna buy them from him that know that that's what it's gonna have to be.
Right, but they'll figure that out.
Hopefully they will, yeah.
We've got this, this weird dichotomy, this struggle where we don't want to regulate the private market when it comes to this kind of stuff, but at the same time, if we're not, we don't know what the developer's margin is. And so we don't know what tools we have to negotiate with. And I, I told Aaron already, I said, I don't, I don't wanna get to the point where we have to start reviewing their pro forma, which we could, if we're doing a rezone, we can ask them to show us the numbers. And so we can see, all right, what is your margin? Are you getting over twenty percent and how much over twenty percent are you getting?
Right, for sure.
Right, right, yep, yeah, you're absolutely right, yeah. From, uh, one thousand dollars for water to eight thousand dollars a lot for water. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, the interest rate.
And how fast that change, you know?
So, yeah, agreed.
But you're right, so I mean, we could be looking at twenty percent and it, it really is their risk. Maybe they're all pulling in ten at the end, um. Maybe they're pulling in fifty. I mean, and that's where the whole dichotomy with regulating private market is, why do we care? Uh, let them make money. Uh, let them make money, but then are we, are they walking away with more development and more lots than they should have?
But there, but to back up a little bit, there are things that we can control. Is it reasonable to have that many parks that close together? Is that reasonable?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't.
So, and I don't think that you get that much use in. I don't think the way it's going.
First, there'd be that many kids.
And and so.
We're headed down to one and a half a house now.
Yeah.
Well, it might be tent city because that would be our people. We live in the tent.
So, so if we, and we determine we get at least five, that it's, that it's, that's overkill on the parks. Then where do we go, you know, where do we go next? How do we adjust this thing back out? Where do we start? Like I say, we know the controllable things or some of the controllable things, and there's a lot of things that are flying in the wind.
Yeah.
And we just gotta take those as they count.
So I wanted to get your take on all this, just to come down to this conversation, right?
My take is bigger parks and not as many.
Spread out.
I agree.
As we're, we're in a spot right now where, um. This number is so far away from us that we've got developers left and right, uh, that we can be developing or we can be negotiating with for parks. But if it's Winston Park right next to Taylor Landing Park, I mean, does that make any sense? And I, doesn't to me either. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Negotiating and having a trail that goes to the big.
Yeah, your, your drawing there is showing no park without trail leading from Winston Park to the other park, exactly what we need.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And if we can get, I hope we can get that done, and so I, I'm glad to hear that because when I wrote the development agreement, I was like, oh, this is genius. I'm gonna make sure that it's more worth it for them to to buy back either a lot or a. Or an easement through another person's property than it is to build a park, and turns out there. Castle Creek wants to build some of the homes and they're the new part of their development, and so.
That you can negotiate.
There's some good negotiation going on, you know, for it, so, okay. I think for you guys are, what you've told me so far, at least from a philosophy perspective, can be taken back and we can start plugging that into each of our negotiations. I think that's helpful. Cool, all right, okay.
You want a final question for your partner? You, you, you just talked about consolidating. Is there any buzz or feeling from the commissioners on how you feel about joining those two districts?
If there's something asked that question, at least not from me.
We, we have.
Yes. We, we've had a discussion with Gage on this very point. I just, I don't think it's gonna. I would rather see him disband the one.
I mean, honestly, it comes down to people. There's not one that's very, has educated themselves and been very active. We, I guess we'd like to see that in the one that affects me.
Yeah.
Well, I get what you're saying, but you know, there are, there are. Yeah, what can we do? Change the boundaries. I mean, they seem, they seem to shake the bull by the horns, at least struck a course of what they wanted to build.
They're not, you, all you gotta do with the other one is dangle a carrot from them when they're jumping for joy, we see that.
Right.
I mean, do they have?
You tell them how many bad things are about it. We don't care, we want it.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty even. You just have a lot more development happening on this side of the river.
You ever get sewer on the other side.
It'll change.
Hey, I got that, uh, that table to show up now that the conversation's over.
Charlie, where does that boundary run between West Warren and Taylor West Weaver? Okay.
Yeah, and it's not, uh, uh, the, the real question, where's the boundary between Warren or West Warren Park District and the, the Warren area that's not in a park district? I still not sure. I do think that, well, if it's not, if it's not to the river yet, um, they're.
Taylor West Weaver? Taylor West Weaver do, they go all the way to the river.
Taylor West Weaver does, but on the other side.
I think they're getting there.
Can you stop sharing for a second?
Stop sharing.
Stop sharing.
Gosh, give him the screen back. He took your whole presentation.
Over, overshared.
You have to be honest. I didn't know what the discussion was supposed to be. I just drew circles and put them up on.
Hey, you did awesome. You did a great job.
Well, we're, we're trying to not, uh.
Bill, Charlie's hurting you more and more. I've given you like this, Ken, Charlie's got you down less than five.
Yeah.
You know, whenever Charlie puts me at the end of the agenda, I know.
You just know that you're not gonna get a chance.
Yeah, but you're usually kinda short and sweet anyway.
And he's always got the crap too.
We're all fed up by that point. We really dish it out.
He gives it to the.
Poor Bill. There's no strategy.
Charlie wasn't in the office the other day, so Bill got to hear me vent.
Well, good and bad, I don't know. Uh, real quick, just to show you guys.
He was so mad, he threw his speaker at me.
Here, Bill. These are, uh, these are, uh, the, the parks that are either existing, approved but not built, planned and in process, uh, or potential and others. So we've got the two, uh, Reese Park, uh, Taylor Landing Park, and that's just the nine foot five area. Um, approved but not built, that's the ninth planned area that's, uh, in Warren, West Warren, um.
That's the black pine.
Black pine.
And that Taylor Landing Park could be fun to go play in right now. Yeah, that's.
No, uh, and Taylor Landing addition, that brings them up to the, the thirty-four or so, uh, Navy Meadows Park, Navy Meadows Nature Park, so we're just. Separating the cooking, food group park with the nature park, Westbridge Meadows Park, they've got a, a forty acre park at least that they're proposing, probably more.
Which one's Westbridge?
Westbridge.
Uh, sorry, uh, flagship.
West of the river.
West of the river.
Oh, they only given forty acres out of fifteen hundred.
Well, they've, they've proposed forty off the, off the top, but every single one of their developments, they say they're also gonna do ten acres per thousand in each of those, so they'll. They'll do more, but this is the only one that's in their master plan. Um, and actually, I lie, there's also a fifteen acre one, master plan two, I probably should include. Um, but, I mean, we're talking about parks, there's only two out there right now, right? And then we're in the background trying to negotiate, how do we get this going? We're going.
Yeah.
We got a list, we're, we got a fair list. Uh, Weaver River Emerald, Emerald Necklace, six hundred and seventy acres, we're getting some of that out of a couple of developers now. Um, and then general plan parks, we've got twenty of them on the general plan map. And so that tells us, oh, I didn't update it with the new number. Tammy, what was the different number?
One, what are you talking, the added ones?
Yeah, the, the.
Nineteen.
Oh, nineteen.
Nineteen, so change that to nineteen, and then the numbers increased, so that thirty-three percent, uh, developed area would turn into forty-eight percent. If I hit.
That was also twenty-three general plan parks, sorry, twenty-three general plan and nineteen.
I'm sure.
We really need to start having these conversations about build out population. I think that, I think that we've been spoon feeding this long enough. And, and we've been doing that for good reasons, because we have a lot of people that don't, don't want to understand what the future is going to be, and they don't wanna plan for it. But really, that's what we need to start looking. You know, when we're talking about fifty years from now, we're talking fifty years that might bring us to build out, and we're pretty close to it. And that's really what we need to be planning for now.
Yeah, I agree.
So we really need to be talking in those numbers, whether, whether it's a popular thing to do or not.
I agree. That's the, that's the hard part, right? Is we get developers who say, we want this much, uh, this many units, and we're like. Just not talking about the units, let's just talk about zoning, but you're right, I mean, we're looking at, so I say a hundred and thirteen thousand. If, if it's only fifteen thousand square foot lots.
Well, but, but that's, and that's the problem, that's exactly the problem. You can't talk about it because nobody wants to talk about it. But it's gotta be talked about.
But that's what landing is talking about the future. We can do our thing about tomorrow.
Anyway, I just wanted to make sure you guys can see where we're going. The, the other thing that, um, that we don't have enough time to look at is, uh, just looking at the block where Taylor Landing is. Uh, including, um, Stagecoach and, um, Smart Fields and, um, what Taylor Landing is working on. I wanted to show you the trails that we have, which is one in Taylor Landing, and it is a weed grown over sidewalk. Um, versus the trails that we have planned, versus the trails that we've already approved in these developments, they're just not built yet. And so, uh, it actually, you could see the network fill in pretty quick, and I think that's gonna be really important for us to hit on. Uh, over time, to be cheerleaders of, because people are gonna see these new trails going in, they're gonna be trails to nowhere, for a little while. Yep, the other thing is, is we've got. One point five million dollars in our trail impact fees that we have to spend pretty damn quick. And so I'm working with our engineers to try and figure out how we incorporate this into their road plans for next year and the year after, which I can see that block, uh. Just trying to fill in the gaps of, for where some of those old developments already are that never put the trails in, set them along eighteen hundred, go all the way to forty, three hundred, maybe down forty, three hundred in both directions. Making sure the high schoolers have something they can get to school on, so.
Does that come from the tax or does that come from?
In, in that, impact fees, one time impact fee.
And Charlie, I, I would like you to get a van checked out one day and, and we take it a field trip. Maybe not as, as long as the one we took, yeah, I, I mean, that was great, don't get me wrong, we're there.
That's a, that's a once every five year filter.
We need, we need to look in our own backyard here. We need to take a look around at what we've got started, what we need to finish, what we need to work on.
Okay.
Um, you know, trails, potential park sites, stuff like that, maybe, maybe that, that's a little premature to say, you know, we're gonna do that in, in, in a meeting or two. But maybe, you know, late summer or fall, I think it'd be a real good thing for everybody to get eyes on together as a group.
Yeah.
So that the discussion points can be had, like, just like we did when we took that trip down.
I don't, I, I have a break and.
Oh, you made me miss the one thing I wanted to go watch.
Well, sounds like we'd be here for the rest of the night. What were you trying to get to?
We didn't blame you, it's your fault. You're the one.
Is that you're kidding? I'm missing a band concert, so it's okay.
Corlin was on his way out to a band concert as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, I said, well, have a good time. He said, did you just tell me I have a good time at a junior high band concert?
Oh, this is a high school one. Yeah, I went to the junior high last week.
Mr. Sherman, do we wanna chat about solar?
Yeah, you can start talking.
Yeah, I'm gonna start, Bill. I don't like what you got in one oh eight twenty-three.
So would you like me to have an introduction or you wanna just get started?
Let's just get started. I'll rip the Band-Aid off.
Hang on, let me rub, roll my sleeves up.
So, as noted, this.
Well, I'll just go to the part that says, this makes the approval that permits an administrative approval.
So you're taking it away.
Provided.
The requirements and standards of the code are met. So your input is being solicited right now. To make sure that any solar panel farm that goes in anywhere in the county meets your standards.
If it doesn't go through a public hearing process, I don't wanna see it, in my opinion.
Well, the, the headache we went through on the last one and the hearings and, and the, the grief that come from that. And there was a lot of good comments that come to the table, and if it doesn't go through that process, then I'm not in favor of this.
Do we have any?
We don't have any, well, we were gonna get one.
We've got one overlay zone.
It never built.
It now Westbridge Meadows. Now, it did go away now, since it's.
My understanding is it's dead. I mean, the development agreement's still recorded to the property, and my understanding is it's still active. Um, I mean, it hasn't expired yet, but I think it's getting close to expiration. So, um, one of the things, when we're looking at our general plan, the general plan does say we need to make the, getting renewable energy, the process of doing that more simple. So maybe simplifying how we're doing it. Um, and that's what this is. It's not necessarily to cut the planning commission out.
Yes.
It's to. It, it's to turn a legislative section into administrative, so I mean, it could be conditional.
Haven't we give you enough of our powers recently?
Well, we'll still make sure it's a planning commission decision, C U P.
Uh, until the state takes that away too.
Until the state takes it.
No, we're being a frontrunner.
And Bill are just getting the head started.
We're, we're being a frontrunner, and the governor's gonna use us as examples, not, they're not gonna take us away. They're gonna give us the city zoning to worry about too.
So. This is already what's on the books. The only thing that changes is what, as you pointed out, that this becomes an administrative level approval. Rather than having to go through the planning commission now. Uh, we did change these to permitted uses, that's in your purview to change back to conditional uses. But again, the concern is always that the state's gonna come back and say, all conditional uses are now administrative approval. So. If you want to keep this as a legislative item, don't change anything. It already is a legislative item. If you're not to simplify the process, an effort to try to encourage maybe more solar farms in the county. Then we can look at this and say, let's make it an administrative approval so that it looks like we're in favor of, or if. If we want more solar farms in the county.
What if, what if we just look at the M zones and said, the apartment in the Amazon permitted use here are the standards. But in the A zones, we did something different, maybe it's conditional or maybe it was still the overlay, but that.
I like it being the overlay. I think if, if we don't have anybody that's proposing this, there, it's a very rare thing. When it starts, if we're really hindering people, they would come to you and say, hey, I wanna do this, but I don't want to go through the process, tell this.
It's our economic development director who's asking us.
And I'm against it one hundred percent.
I mean, it's not her. She's tried to, she's trying to get some interest and some.
What Valerie could say, hey, majority of the finding commission was very polite about it. Brian was really embracing.
Me and her, we butted our heads.
No, but I do agree with Brian. I think we need to keep things in order as they are. I don't think the process we went through, it, it was a tough, a little bit of a tough process, but I don't think it was horrible, and it certainly turned out positive at the end of it.
Well, I, I think with the learning curve, we, we hadn't been in that situation.
Right.
And, and we built a good code, I feel, around that process. So to go in and make a change to the code that, that worked, I don't see a point, and I'll take it back to the comment I made earlier. Yeah, we have a lot of other codes in our code right now that need to be worked on. I don't know why we're working on solar overly.
Well, you just heard the reason.
Well, I heard the reason, yeah, and I'm gonna bring that up with someone else too.
Problem that person needs to hear. What should both cry.
Hopefully they will. Sound recording.
I mean, in a nice way, that's what our concern is, representing the public.
Have the conversation.
So for Bill, this, I mean, this is just a discussion work session, so it's basically just not putting this off.
Yeah, no, it's, I'm, I'm getting very clear direction. I wouldn't, I would like to hear if there is anyone who has anything else to say other than let's not worry about it.
Well, I've got a comment, I don't know how valid it is, but. I don't think we oughta burn through our. M area out west for solar panels, when someday we may have a huge business out there that could employ two thousand, three thousand people.
That's a very valid point.
Yeah. Um. That's what I.
That's what I, I didn't like what Charlie said, but that was my same thought. We have the M area for a reason. We wanna bring the industry in. It's not a place for this.
Yeah, I, I think too that with the black pine thing, I think that it might. Put a lot, a better spotlight on out west, especially if we can get some infrastructure.
If, if you wanna do something like that and put solar panels, you got a lot of rooftops.
Yep.
On top of those buildings.
Yo.
That they're not seen, it's just a rooftop, you know what? Fill the roof full of these damn solar panels and you're gonna get as much as what you would have on a.
Let's, let's keep the business on the basement and the panels on the.
Two bird, you're killing two birds with one stone, yeah.
Okay, cause you're doing killing birds.
You might not be.
What do you think your solar panels do? Didn't you hear that from the bird people at the public hearings?
We did hear that, and I also.
It grained in my head.
I also found the, I found the science.
Oh, hey, I got a comment, though, but today I was listening on the West Warren page, I think. And they was having a, uh, some type of a country go down about the, uh. Site out west for the, uh, what do we call that inland port?
The inland port.
Was that tonight? Or is it tomorrow? Might be tomorrow.
I didn't see that.
But it's on the page and things like that. Was there anybody local? Again, it's the same.
They're all coming.
For the ones here.
It's all the port eaters out of, out of other areas that just hate the port ID in general.
And they're the ones having that all down?
Yeah, they're trying to draw some. When you sent the, when they had the public carrier, that deal went in front of the commission, not one.
You know, being a school logistician, we need those ports, there's no doubt about it. Because you know what you went through at the end of the so-called epidemic we had. Because these ports, what their job is, not only to move it, but to take up the slack between. Increased usage on the other end, and for me, I think they're vital. That's how we win wars. That's how we keep our people fed. With murderers. With respirators. Wash machines. No, I think they're, they're, I think they're integral, we need to have them. That's my two bits. I woke up, I'm sorry, I'll go back.
Sorry, I'm just looking at the small solar energy system code, just to make sure what. We're talking about putting big, uh, solar panels on on the rooftops. Can happen, and yeah, it can. We we don't have to do this. So somebody could just. If they wanted to do a solar overlay, they didn't wanna go through the regional process, they could just build a bunch of buildings and put solar panels on top of it. Okay.
Well, it's actually a better place when you think about it.
Out of sight, out of mind, yep. Okay, so the current code.
Hey, hey, I can handle a lot less work. If you wanna say, don't do any more work.
No, let's work on codes that we need to be updating.
You know, it's even better is that, uh, Bill had done a one where I said, no, not. So he had to go and redo it, but now I feel bad.
That I don't mind. We appreciate what you do, though. I learned in the Navy that it it all pays the same.
Good point.
Yeah, it all pays the same.
Cool. Any other thoughts, desires, questions? Burning edicts?
You got the credit card.
Motion to adjourn.
Here we go, have a cold.
Stacking all those in favor, say hi.